Well, we'd like to welcome everyone to the Board of Commissioners for Washington County, Utah, today, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. We appreciate you being here to conduct the county's business as well as your business of the citizenry. We have a couple of items we'd first like to attend to, an invocation. I don't see Reverend Alex Wilkey here. Gary Webster, would you mind offering us an invocation? Thank you. Following that, a pledge of allegiance by, is it James Schaefer? Thank you, welcome. After the invocation, if you'd conduct that, that'd be great. Thanks, Gary.
Our Father in Heaven, as we humbly bow our heads before the beginning of this county commission meeting here in Washington County, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have to be part of these proceedings. We ask those on this commission and others that tend to issues here in Washington County and will report on various issues, right, their minds will be at ease and will receive information that will help us understand the various challenges and issues that are here in this wonderful part of Utah. We're so grateful for our nation and opportunities of freedoms that we enjoy. Please be with us at this time, and we would ask that by hand, we will watch over our leaders at all times of this nation, this state, this county. We're grateful once again for all of our blessings. Please be with us this afternoon, these things we ask and pray for, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Gary. Well, our wonderful American Legion Pose ninety always helps to supply some when to do this for us. If you, why don't you tell us, come to the mic and tell us a little bit about yourself and where you served and things like that, and we'll let you go forward.
Oh, thank you, Gil. I'm new to the community. My daughter came here to play volleyball at Utah Tech, so I liked it so much. It's very patriotic, very Christian, so living in other places, it was a warm welcome to be here. And I served in the Navy. I served aboard the battleship Missouri as a pilot rescue swimmer. And I enjoy the community and being a part of it, and thank you for allowing us to do this for you.
Thank you for your service, and thank you for being here.
You're welcome. We love other patriots, so.
I see that. I'm very busy being the commander here in this.
The Missouri old is a special place in everyone's hearts to know the role it has had around the world.
Yes, but now you have to go to Honolulu to see it. It's not in Bremerton anymore, so.
Well, wonderful to have you with us.
Thank you for allowing me.
If everyone please rise and face the United States flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome. And how's your daughter doing?
Uh, she's now like assistant coach here.
Okay, well, there you go.
She's more than me, and I'm retired.
Well, do you get free tickets to the?
Do you need them, I can get them for you.
Okay. Not for us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, our first item is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a means of expediting the consideration of routine matters. If a commissioner requests that items be removed from the Consent Agenda, those items are placed at the beginning of the regular agenda. Other than requests to remove items, a motion to approve the items on the Consent Agenda is not debatable.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as follows. Considerate A, consideration of auditor approved claims for payment for June fifth, twenty twenty-four through June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. B, consideration of commission meeting minutes of June fourth, twenty twenty-four. C, consideration of Ash Creek Special Service District meeting minutes of June fourth, twenty twenty-four. D, consideration of commission work meeting minutes of June fourth, twenty twenty-four. E, consideration of administrative adjustments of real property. F, consideration of administrative adjustments for personal property. G, consideration of applications of property tax abatement, of which there's one. H, acknowledgement of adoption of ordinances twenty twenty-four, twelve sixty-three dash oh, twenty twenty-four, twelve sixty-four dash oh, and twenty twenty-four, twelve sixty-five dash oh, published on Sunday, June ninth, twenty twenty-four. And I, consideration of contact amendment for increased state funding for Children's Justice Center expansion expenses.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second with no division of the Consent Agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Yes. Well, we want everyone to know that our dear Reverend Wilkey showed up, Gary gave the prayer, but Reverend, you're welcome to stay with us. Would you like to offer a prayer now, Reverend? I know you put a lot of thought and time into it. Would you mind coming to the podium and offering us a prayer over our medium, our meeting? Thank you. Thank you for guiding us.
I'm Reverend Alex Wilkey, and I was to give the prayer, and I'm gonna try to find the place where you were meeting. Took me a few minutes, and I want to just know that we're standing on an eve of a very historic day, depending on whose Constitution you read, because I have searched all morning for my constitutions that have been sent to me from General Eisenhower to Hillsdale College, and none of them have ever given me the date when the first, the signing of the bill which read, and I want to just read that opening article, and then have a word of prayer. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and to our posterity, to ordain and establish this Constitution of the United States of America." And might I say, if you read any of your constitutions, I might say that you probably will not find the date that George Washington signed that document. The news media has here has come out and said, "Oh, it was the nineteenth day of June, and so tomorrow was supposed to be a national holiday, not a spray." My Father, we thank you for the confusions we all find ourselves in. We thank you for the troubles we go to, to do things for you. We ask now that you would be with each one of us, not only in this room, but all across America, that we might remember that there was a day of signing the Constitution. And most of the constitutions that I've read today, from Hillsdale College, which has a semester class for it, in Michigan, has no date for the signing of that document, until we ask you, sign that document into our own hearts, for we pray in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Reverend, thank you. Thank you for years of contribution to our community. Wonderful. Thank you for helping us out. All right, our next is a presentation that we put together a series of videos that explained certain portions of what we do as commissioners, and this is number eight in our jail expansion project, mostly for public consumption of thinking, what do those commissioners do, and what are the goals that they have and things we're working on? So with that, Adam, I spared you your
Thank you.
explanation. We'll have that roll when you're ready, Sarah.
As we look back on twenty twenty-three and look forward to twenty twenty-four, Washington County is pleased to announce that we signed a contract with Slatton Contractors and Simpson-Colder to do an expansion on our jail, and it will be completed in twenty twenty-five. It became aware to us, especially during COVID, important need that we had at our local county jail to expand our medical wing and add beds to the jail. This is something that we look forward to accomplishing in this next year to come.
The jail expansion project has been needed for a long time. Of course, the medical wing is a primary driver behind the expansion. State and federal mandates require that we have this kind of care for the inmates. There will also be a new wing with thirty beds in the bunk style that accommodates sixty inmates. This new wing space will also provide additional opportunities for remodel in other areas of the jail.
As we went and toured other jails and looked at the design features that we needed with the remodel and with the expansion, we really looked at the issues that we discovered during COVID. These inmates have nowhere to go. They can't be quarantined in other areas, and we just didn't have a facility that could accommodate those types of situations, and we don't know what the future will bring. So the design and the layout of the expansion and the remodel really helps our deputies and our correction staff best be able to watch over and keep the inmates safe and themselves as well. This allows a remodel of the booking facility as inmates are first brought in by law enforcement, to be able to be processed, to have a better flow, and to keep our deputies safe, which is a primary concern for us. The funding for this expansion and remodel came from the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funding. Now, as has already been mentioned, we were expecting that this is going to be necessary in the coming years, and the only way to pay for it was likely going to have to be bonding, which is taking on debt for the county to be paid for by the taxpayers. But when the ARPA funds were made available, and they came with lots of strings attached, this was one area where we thought the federal funding was very appropriate and that we didn't have to burden our local taxpayers with additional debt.
Funding public safety in county jails is a challenge that all counties across the state and even across the nation have. And so it's fortunate that we had the funding not only from the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan, but also have funding from a lawsuit settlement in the opioid cases that allowed us to have some extra money there that we wouldn't have to go back to the taxpayers and ask them to pay additional money for this jail expansion. This jail expansion will meet the needs of our county into the future, and we have a great team in place, not only with our contractors and architect, but also with our county administrator, Nicole Felshaw, and our elected county sheriff, Nate Brooksby, and his team that are working so hard to make sure that this will not only happen, it'll happen a way that'll help meet the needs of law enforcement and public safety in our county, and help keep our community a healthy, safe place we want it to be.
So with that in mind, hopefully that enlightens some of you, and if you find yourself coming to our timeshare out there, we'll be ready for you. Great medical care.
I like that. That was good. Sir.
It just looks so cool. We're walking in like a resort, you know?
Exactly.
Pan over the name.
All right. We should charge TRT tax.
Yeah, yeah. To your part. All right, next.
Breakfast included.
Very light note. No, thank you for being here, Sergeant Cashin, for your emergency services report. You've been busy, and appreciate you taking some time.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Yeah, we've been, last two months have been back to normal, I guess you could call it.
Crazy.
In the last thirty days, we've had twelve search and rescue calls, two hundred and fifty-four man-hours, so we're now at fifty-five calls for the year so far. Had eight in-county residents we rescued, five out of county, which are Utah residents, and seven out of state. So I'm just gonna kind of briefly go over a few of these, a couple of them maybe go into more depth. I had a paraglider crash up by Blue Springs. Basically, the gentleman had just taken off and lost power, and he came down. Had some lower body injuries. He was actually flown out by liflight. On the twenty-seventh, had stranded mountain bikers on manganese. Basically, they got separated, ran out of water, and the wife pedaled out to get, no, she actually walked out to get help, left her bike and just hiked out. And they found her, and SAR went in and found him, brought him out. Stranded motorist up in Pinto on the twenty-eighth. On the thirtieth, we had another stranded motorist up at Toker Falls. This was later in the evening. Husband and wife and an eighteen-month-old baby, which is something we don't want to leave them out there. So I sent in SAR to get them. On the thirty-first, overdue hikers, Colob Canyon, that one luckily kind of resolved itself as SAR was arriving. They actually found the people in the car and stopped them and verified it was them, and they were okay. UTV action on the first on Sand Mountain, two seven-year-olds, male, female. They were actually brought off the hill and transported to the hospital with mostly minor injuries. On the first, we had three gentlemen from Idaho that decided to go to Tocaville Falls, stand at the top of the falls, and jump off. Apparently, they didn't check the water. It wasn't deep enough. One got some bumps and scrapes. One broke one ankle. One broke two ankles. SAR went in, got him stabilized. They haul, they brought one guy out, the one with the one broken ankle out in the jeep, the other one was in too much pain, so they called liflight, and they came and flew him all the way to the hospital.
I have a question.
Yes.
It's just, they've been jumping. Pictures, I can't be able to breathe.
Together, they were I don't know if they were holding hands when they jumped.
It's a puddle up there. I can't imagine what they were thinking.
I kind of got the feeling talking to some of the SAR guys that there may have been some beverages that had been consumed that impaired their ability to make a good choice in that matter.
I'm just wondering, the third guy, who, which one broke both ankles? Because I want to know, is he getting worse or better? From the bumps and bruises to one ankle to two ankles?
It was, I think, just a matter of luck that the one guy hit a little bit deeper water, so he didn't have any major injury, just bumps and scrapes.
Mr. Iverson, don't feel bad. I feel, I'm right there with you. I was wondering, did they all jump together? Usually, you want to wait and let your friend be the idiot. And see, test the water. I do feel horrible, but I thought this, because I heard about this on the news.
Yeah.
And I thought, how can we just keep doing the same thing?
You know, Commissioners, it's a hard, my job sometimes is really hard when you hear what people have done to get themselves into trouble. And I have to remind myself and my SAR guys that we are not there to judge people, we're there to rescue people. But don't think it doesn't go through our minds at times.
Well, I do remember one time when Tocaville Falls was, or no, Gunlock Falls was running really big, and Corey had come in and talked about all of his concerns with it. And I was up there with my family, and I was walking past this group of kids that were jumping off of it, and I'm thinking, and I tried to tell them, people have died, right where you're jumping.
Yep.
And they didn't seem to be that concerned, so I just went home. I mean, I don't know what I was supposed to do.
Um, yes. All I can, all I All I can, all I can say is I guess when we were young, we were invincible and I realize now I am not. So I'm a lot more cautious.
Anyway, sorry for
Anyway, no, it's fine. I, I had to do an interview over that one too and explain kind of what happened to people. So. Okay, here we go. On the 4th, we had a stranded, another stranded motorist in the Pinto area. I don't know if that's becoming really popular up there, but we've been up there a couple times this last month. They apparently were just getting off in some really rough areas and then they're afraid to back down or can't back down. On the 8th, we had an overdue hiker in Brous. Gentleman had called his wife about 3 o'clock. She said he sounded out of breath, was unable to get a hold of him, unlike him. Deputies went up there, SAR was called up there. And I guess there were a lot of family and some friends that were up there looking for him. He was found a few hundred yards north of the Brous station up there. And unfortunately, he didn't survive. I don't know what it was, but I just know he did not survive. Had an injured climber at Lamb's Knoll, 57-year-old female, fell. In the report, it shows 10 to 15 feet, but she was in a slot canyon. So high angle was there. And we also called DPS to help hoist her out of there because she had some back injuries. And she was transferred to liflight, which also came and then flown out. Missing person on Smith Mesa. Gentleman had been missing for about three days out of Leverkin. And his family, we didn't have a start point. His family actually got a helicopter and was flying to his 10 favorite spots. And on the last one is where they saw his truck. Search and rescue went out, deputies went out, searched around. It didn't take very long and somebody noticed he was actually about 170 feet down. And I know I had 70 here, but I did some follow-up. And unfortunately, he didn't survive either. And then we had a stranded motorist last night out on Lidle Ranch. The guy had been out since 8:30 in the morning, had no water, no food, no anything. So they went out and got him, brought him back in. He was fine. He'd been drinking out of the creek out there, which they did advise him he might have some medical issues, but that was, that was about it.
Thank you. Again, thank all of your volunteers and those who are under you that you never know who's going to come and help you when you're in need. So and it's also comforting to family that in the deceased cases that you were there because you could render that kind of mental aid as well.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, consideration of purchase requests, Ray.
Okay. All right. The first thing to attend to is there's one ratification. This was due to an HVAC unit, which provides AC to the CJC, had gone out. So that was something we needed to take care of pretty promptly. The total of this was $17,021.
You should have told them to wait till our next commission meeting.
I feel bad when it's AC in the summer. This next one is for fare. This is leftover hotel rooms and changes and various things for $18,083.95. The next one is for Legacy Park. This is for the Harmony Building restroom remodel. The cost includes all materials and labor that is needed to accomplish this for $55,619.50. The next one is for some landscaping and a brick wall out at Legacy Park. This is to remove all the sod and replace with the zero scape. And then the brick wall or block wall is over by the RV side and also some sprinkler repair. This is for $53,975. The next one is for some picnic tables, some new trash cans. There's also some gloves in the order and then a courtyard bench. This is to match some benches and picnic tables that we had already had. And so they wanted to get it from the same place. This is for $22,701.27. These next few are for the roads apartment. This is to get everything in order for the chipping projects for the year. This first one is for the chips. There's three eighths inch chips. This is what will be used on the roads that are already paved. And three-quarter inch chips, this is for the roads that are gravel roads now that will be paved. And this is estimated to be at a total of $225,225. The next one is for the oil. This oil is just the regular oil to use on the already paved roads. And this is estimated to be $487,900. The next one is for a specialty oil. This is for the gravel roads that will be now paved roads. This is estimated to be at $328,530. The next one is for our tourism. This is a golf production media partnership. This is, this cost includes what the quota for the media, the production is, plus an estimate of any travel costs that may accrue. And this is for $85,000. The final one is for the library. This, this is grant, a grant-funded purchase. These are youth learning centers, also called early literacy centers. These are for small children, smaller computers for smaller children. And this is a total of $27,726.
There we go.
Unless there's any questions.
Well, thank you, Ray. Appreciate that. Ms. Chairman, with your permission, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt or accept these purchase requests.
And I'll second that with the idea, with the comment, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, I was in, had a conversation with somebody the other day who was complaining about numerous things, mostly federal. The federal government gives us lots of things to complain about, but some of them local and taxes and everything. And I said, you know, it's not cheap to pave roads. This right here, just in the chips and the oil is almost a million bucks. Or sorry, it's over a million bucks. It's, it's not cheap. Costs have gone way up and we, I said, you like to drive on roads that don't have potholes and cracks? Well, yeah. And this is just to maintain the roads we already have. Like it, things are not, it's not wasteful. These, but that's, these purchase orders right here are a good example of it's expensive to maintain the things that we have.
Again, you let a road go and it just gets more and more expensive to bring it back up to drivability. So we appreciate both the maintenance issue and efforts there. I'm glad you pointed that out. Did you second the motion?
I already did, yep.
All right. Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ray. Our next item is a report in consideration of 2024 Washington County tax sale, Ryan.
Good afternoon. So this year's tax sale, we have three properties that we need to talk about. Two of them sold at auction. They were troubled properties, to say the least. Both of them had significant liens on them from the IRS to the state of Utah. We've been working with the families and all those involved really closely. So this isn't a surprise to them. In fact, as it turns out, it would probably be better that this happens because on a, it's, it's an actual, one of the properties is an abandoned mobile home that's uninhabitable. And this tax sale process will satisfy the lien that's on, well, wipe, wipe the lien out from the state of Utah. So we'll be able to send on this particular property, I'll give the number for you, over $108,000 back to the family. The other property that sold that had, it was a mess. There's owners that aren't alive anymore, some that the IRS liens were in the millions of dollars. And so this particular piece of property was agricultural land that an adjacent property owner was able to purchase. And so I'm just going to read these parcel numbers of, this parcel is 4191-A-2-L-HV. The property taxes that were due on that were $750.87. And it sold at auction for $140,400. So we're sending $139,000 plus back to the estate there. The next property was the uninhabitable mobile home over in the Hurrican area, but the parcel on that is H-GANV-B-15-A. The taxes that we're owing on that were $4,330.21 and it sold for $113,000. So over $108,000 will be going back to the estate in that case as well. So on those two properties, we need to, I ask that you, or recommend that you ratify the sale on these two.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendations of the clerk auditor and ratify these two tax sales.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any questions on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
All right. The, the third property is a property that did not sell. It's a roadway located in Washington City. And so that one, we need to strike that to the county. And I have some language here of what I'm supposed to say. So I generally don't speak in hereby's and whereby's and shalls and shalls, but I want to read it just so I say the right thing out of the code. That any property offered for sale for which there is no purchaser shall be struck off to the county by the county auditor. And I need to publicly declare as follows, that all property here offered for sale, which has not been struck off to a private purchaser, is hereby struck off and sold to the county of Washington. And I hereby declare the fee simple title of the property to be vested in the county. So I've got the auditor's tax deed prepared for all of these properties. This one that's going to be struck off to the county, we'll work with Washington City to get that deeded in the future so that we're not stuck with it and they can have their roadway. Interestingly enough, that property was a Moroni Feed Company, who I, who I think is now Norbis, Norbis, Turkey. And I've talked with them and they, after looking at it, they didn't have any interest in redeeming it. So they were happy to get it off their books.
I always find it curious, these properties pop up, because somebody's been paying the taxes on it for multiple years now. And at some point, they
In 2019, they got wise and stopped paying on that one.
Stopped paying tax on the road.
So that's, that's all I've got for the tax sale. Do you have any questions about that?
Nope.
Last year, we went to an all online model and it's worked, it's worked well.
Okay. Gavin?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the recommendation for this parcel as explained by our esteemed clerk auditor, Ryan Zolby.
I'll second that motion. Okay, motion and a second on that parcel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ryan. Now you know number five, sir, consideration of the 2024 certified tax rates for Washington County.
Yeah, so Washington County has several, several tax rates. I'll go over those really quickly. For our general operations, our certified tax rate this year, well, let me just speak generally, and I'm talking all entities across Washington County. Most of them are seeing their certified tax rates actually increase this year, and that has not happened in a very, very long time. Our assessor's office, when they do all their analysis and compare it to, you know, comparable sales, they found that they needed to actually lower values this year. So they actually, I have some numbers here for you. This is overall, this is like the entire county of all the entities taxable values. The assessor's office actually lowered values over $620 million. However, there was still a lot of new growth, a lot of new building that came online and that the new growth, the assessor's office added 1.9, over $1.9 billion of taxable value. So even though there was a decrease in market value, taxable values overall, there still was a lot of new growth that happened. And I want to point out too, that because certified tax rates are increasing, that does not mean that an entity such as Washington County or the city of St. George is going to collect additional revenue. It's not. They get what their budget was the prior year plus any new growth that happened. So that's how the certified rate, when values overall go down, the certified rate adjusts up. And when values, I can't remember what I said first, when values increase, the rate drops down. So this year, you're seeing the reverse where values went down, so the rate's adjusting up a little bit.
But Ryan, just so the public understands and the media can report, so the inverse relationship between value and interest and tax rate means that it's roughly the same, not, not for every single home, right? But, but overall, that it's roughly the same number of dollars out of your pocket.
Right. Unless your property happened to not go down in value as much as the average home did this year.
Yeah. But it's a general rule, we're not collecting any more money. It's, it's about the same amount of dollars out of your pocket. If your value goes up, the rate goes down, about the same number of value, dollars out of your pocket. Your value goes down, the rate comes back up to compensate for that. And therefore, you're about the same number of dollars out of your pocket. That's the way the state law is set up so that it's not changing the impact to you as a family in general.
That's correct. Comparative with other counties, have you had any contact with what their tax rates might be?
They're still working on them, but actually looking, because I can look and see what the other certified rates are. Of course, there's still some that are work in progress. They did not, the assessor's office did not drop their values as much as ours did. Now, that may very well be the case in other market areas, so.
Thank you.
Let me just go over these rates really quick. For our general operations, our certified rate is .000373, which would have a budget revenue line of $13,759.83. This is the one that I, I'm always happy to report on as our general obligation bonds. We're actually able to lower that rate over 37 and a half percent this year because we're almost done paying them off. In fact, this is the last year that we'll be collecting a tax for those. The last bond isn't called, they're non-callable, so we can't pay them off early, but we'll, we'll pay that off in 2026. But next year and the year following will be paid from our fund balances. So that'll be nice to see that one go away. This year, we're actually paying off an additional bond as well.
Is this the last of the jail bond?
So this, the one that's getting paid off this year is the library and COA buildings that we borrowed some money. And the one that gets paid off in 2026 is specific just to the library fund. So.
Great.
You can take it off the books.
So the certified rate on the GO bonds is .00001. And that's to collect $369,581. That's down from $590,000 last year. The library fund, the certified rate for that is .000129. And that's, the budget of revenue is $4,758,763. And the last one I needed to read off here is for the local assessing and collecting levy. The certified rate for that is .000230 with a budgeted revenue of $8,589,926. So I would ask that you accept the certified rates as presented. So I would, uh, ask that you accept the certified rates as presented.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, uh, Ryan, you got a question here. I like this sheet because you've got auditor's tax rate, proposed tax rate, maximum by law.
Yeah.
That, that's the maximum rate that we could, we, if we wanted to. We'd have to go through truth and taxation and everything, but that's the maximum rate that we could apply.
That's right.
That's ten times the rate for both the library and the general operations. We're a tenth of what we could do under the law.
Yep.
That's why we're the best county in the state.
I'll second that motion.
I agree.
Chairman, officially, that was my motion to accept these, yeah.
I heard a second from my right. All in favor of the certified tax rates as submitted for the upcoming year, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Ryan. Certified tax rate is one of the critical things that the clerk auditor does, so.
And one of the things, if I can just chime in there, uh, that Ryan does so very well, given that he spent so many years in the assessor's office, he understands both sides of this really well, which makes him a very valuable auditor.
Yep. And unlike one of the cities in California that I won't mention, but who were just brought to, to white, that they had exceeded the government allowed taxable rate for five years, collecting too much and have to return it, that's often interesting. All right. Um, our next item is item number six, proclamation number twenty, twenty-four, thirty-five, a proclamation declaring June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, Juneteenth in Washington County. Devin.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, the county has recognized this holiday since it was recognized by the state of Utah a few years ago. But, uh, this is the first proclamation on this holiday. If it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll just read the proclamation.
Please.
A proclamation declaring June nineteenth as Juneteenth in Washington County. Whereas in eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, which declared that all persons held as slaves in the rebellious states, quote, "are and henceforward shall be free." Whereas initial enforcement of the proclamation was slow, especially in Texas. But on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union General Gordon, Granger, and two thousand Union troops arrived in Texas and proclaimed freedom for more than two hundred and fifty thousand enslaved individuals in Texas. Whereas starting in twenty twenty-one, Juneteenth was recognized under bipartisan legislation as a federal holiday. Whereas in twenty twenty-two, Juneteenth was recognized as an official state holiday in Utah, which made Utah the tenth state to do so. And whereas Juneteenth was a crucial moment for liberty and equality in our nation's history. But we recognize that there is still progress to be made nationwide in ensuring equal opportunities for every American and rooting out racial discrimination. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County that June nineteenth is recognized as Juneteenth in Washington County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do think it's important that we celebrate the Emancipation Proclamation. My only point was, I wish you'd said Republican President Abraham Lincoln. You know, I like to point that out, that the Republican Party is the party of emancipation. It is the party that lived up to the, you know, more perfect union. Um, so anyway, with that, I think it's, I think it's a great proclamation. And it's something we need to recognize and honor in this country. And, um, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second for this proclamation number twenty, twenty-four, dash, thirty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Devin, also for putting that together for us. Our next item is tabled. It was a request for a zone change. However, the moratorium in the area of New Harmony where it would be has yet to be lifted and is in further discussion. So I'd like to ask for a motion to table this item.
Chairman, I move that we table ordinance number twenty, twenty-four, twelve, sixty-six, dash, oh. This is agenda item number seven.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second for tabling till uncertain future, but we'll figure a date and have the applicants know when that could happen, if it happens, if they desire. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eight, consideration of resolution number R twenty, twenty-four, thirty-three, twenty-one, resolution demonstrating Washington County's support and approval of TRT funding for matching funding for the Utah Office of Tourism Co-op Marketing Program.
Greetings.
Hi, Sarah.
Hello. Um, you guys have heard this before, but on repeat. Um, this is verifying that Washington County Greater Zion has the money to match, um, the annual co-op, um, funding process from the Utah Office of Tourism. Um, there they have up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in matching marketing funds. Um, we, with, um, this approval, will go after those funds. Um, and, um, hopefully, um, acquire all of those for our marketing project going forward. Um, this resolution verifies that those monies are available. Of course, they're tourism dollars, not county straight dollars. And, uh, that we will, um, again, go after that, um, and, again, have your backing. Sorry.
So you would like in motion?
If you would so, be so inclined.
Sad joke, okay. Ready for that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R twenty, twenty-four, thirty-three, twenty-one, uh, resolution demonstrating Washington County's support and approval of TRT funding for matching funding for the Utah Office of Tourism Co-op Marketing Program.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All in. Good.
Thank you.
Unanimous. Item number nine, also with tourism, consideration of resolution, by the way, one of the coolest things to happen, of number R dash twenty, twenty-four, thirty-three, twenty-two, resolution approving a marketing sponsorship agreement with Black Desert Resort. Chad.
Commissioners, this is a resolution. As you know, last year, the Tourism Advisory Board voted to approve the funding for a marketing agreement with Black Desert Resort for the upcoming historic PGA and LPGA events that will happen out in Ivans, um, starting in, oh, I, I, three months from now, almost. You know, that first August, October seventh through the thirteenth of twenty twenty-four will be the PGA event, first time in Utah in sixty years. So this historic event, we've, um, worked out an agreement. It's taken us a year to work out this agreement with Black Desert, PGA, LPGA, on, um, marketing Washington County. Greater Zion, what to do. We've purchased ads within the Golf Channel, um, plus, you know, attracting that quality visitor that we're looking for. These events will lift golf in Washington County. As you know, we've got the fourteen golf courses in that twenty-mile radius. So this, um, is putting all eyes on Washington County, all eyes on Utah, just like with the Ironman World Championships, we're going to have eyes once again on us in this area. Uh, we were talking before the meeting that nothing like this is going to, uh, pop, as, as Patrick Manning likes to say on TV. And I was out there the other day and looking at it and I'm just like, this is, there's, I've looked at tournaments and there's just nothing like this that, uh, is gonna look good on it. It's a four-hour-a-day commercial and thousands of people are gonna flock here in October and in May of twenty-five. This agreement is through May of twenty, uh, October of twenty twenty-four with the PGA, May of twenty twenty-five, or the spring of twenty twenty-five with the LPGA, and then the fall again with the PGA. And then two to be determined what our involvement will be after those three events are done.
Well, you teed it up well.
What's that?
Oh, the, the.
Oh, I didn't hear.
Hey, um, how's everything coming out there?
That's a, that might be a question for the Black Desert team. I know they've, they've assembled a, a new team, not necessarily a new team, but they keep bringing quality people on board with, uh, with John and Coco and Danny and Marty, who's in California, who can't be here today. They've, it's really to a new level of professionalism and excitement that's coming. And it's, it's coming close. We all shake our heads sometimes wondering how we're gonna pull it off, but it'll look good on TV.
Yeah.
Would any of them like to address the commission?
John?
Coco? Commissioners, thank you. My name is John Coolbaugh. I have moved my family here to Washington County from Connecticut. Um, come from, uh, twenty-two years in professional golf and, and managing professional events. So very happy to be here. My wife and children are thrilled to be a part of your community now. And we're stressed and busy and excited and, um, just so pleased to be able to put on this tournament here and at Black Desert, so thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, John.
So is your, uh, the venue and everything, we took a tour, it's been several months ago.
Yes.
And, uh, that's always been a little bit of the, the worry is if you'd be ready, you know?
Yes, it's a, it's an ambitious project, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, enough of the infrastructure will be ready and, and we, um, we're, we're gonna showcase this in a great way this year. And I know when the players see it particularly, this is gonna become a destination for them to bring their families, you know, once the water park and the rest of the amenities at the resort are developed. But, um, it's, it's the construction team, it's coming from doing different projects all across the country. I, I haven't seen a construction team this, um, this skilled. Uh, they're really, they're gonna get this place ready, uh, as ready as it can be for October.
I know that, um, I've worked in construction for years. I know Commissioner Almquist did as well. Whenever you worked on a home show, or a home that was in the home show, there was a certain level of stress and craziness. And that's kind of the way your construction site fills and has its felt for the last year or so.
Yes, I'm kidding.
Last couple of years is just this, this nervous energy that everybody's, uh.
Exactly.
You know, you, you'll probably be out there, you know, planting the flowers the day before the first coverage shows up, so.
Exactly, that's, that's part of what comes with purchasing a ticket. You gotta bring your own watering can to help us out.
Very good.
Well, they say, hopefully, they won't have to bring their own bed sheets and stuff.
You know, Chad, I was just thinking, you know, baseball, you throw out the ceremonial first pitch. I thought for just a second we should throw out like the ceremonial first drive. But then I realized that there's a lot of YouTube videos of people that can't throw it the full distance from the mound to the, and I don't know that anybody wants to take that first drive.
What's, what's the first, what's the first hole, it's a par?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a tricky par.
Three hundred, par, four hundred yards, three hundred yards.
It's a little more stressful when you have people there watching you as well.
A little bit. And, and you, you're not forgiving. The lava is not forgiving at all to try and recover that ball out of the rough, so.
Yeah.
Uh, probably best not to take that. I, I was gonna suggest it, but I'm gonna withdraw that suggestion.
We'll leave that to the professionals on, for the.
Yeah, let's leave. Good luck, this is gonna be exciting.
Very good. Danny or Coco, do you wish to say anything?
I decline. I'll just mention a couple of things. My name is Coco Head. I'm the new, uh, full-time managing counsel for Black Desert. Uh, after thirty-six years in Florida, northeast Florida, uh, home of the PGA, Potawatomi Beach area, I'm moving my family here also. We'll be here in about two to three weeks. And, um, uh, this is a long-term project. Uh, and as I call it, my, my, this is the, this is the nineteenth hole. This is my last, uh, last stop on the course. Uh, this is where we'll live. My brother lives here in St. George, and so it's kind of a homecoming, being raised and born in Phoenix area. But I just want to give you just a little heads up on what's going on out there. You're talking about having everything ready. Um, one of the reasons that they brought me in is because we're gonna be closing on seventy-three individual family lots next month in the North and South Village, North Village being in Ivans, South down in Santa Clara. And we'll close on our first tranche of golf village condos and resort condos in, uh, basically September. Uh, that's the month that we'll close the most of those. The, um, the resort will be open, the restaurant will be, the hotel, part of it, one hundred and seventy-three rooms will be open. Uh, the two restaurants will be open. We just opened Club Seventy-Three, which gets its name. It's a Tom Weiskopf, the seventy-third course that he, that was designed. And he won the US Open in seventy-three, so that's where it gets its name. There is also another restaurant, um, out on the golf course, uh, that, uh, that will be opening up shortly. And so, uh, we may not have a, a water park ready, but we'll have a lot of other things. And I think it'll be exciting for the community. Uh, we're just looking forward to, uh, becoming a, a, a firm fixture here with the PGA and the LPGA. I don't think they'll wanna leave once they come. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have about progress or things going on.
Well, uh, welcome from Florida, beautiful state as well, Connecticut. Welcome. And Danny, where were you from again?
Hi, I'm Danny. I'm a recent transplant from Los Angeles. I was there for thirteen years, but I moved here last summer. Actually just closed on my first house up in Veo, so really happy to be part of Washington County as a tax-paying citizen, full on board. Really happy to be a part of Black Desert, excited what's, what's coming, not only now, but in the next, the few years. This is not a short-term project, this isn't opening in phases, this is blessing the community in phases. And this is something that we're really excited to be a part of and really see how the landscape changes for the better. But couldn't be, couldn't be more thrilled to be part of this.
Your house is in Veo?
In Brookside specifically.
Brookside?
Mm-hmm.
Highway eighteen.
You know.
Welcome to the club. We'll get you your jacket soon. It's not green, but.
Does it, does it hold up against the wind? Because we had a mad windstorm last night.
Yeah, that was crazy.
Yeah.
Wind, I didn't feel any wind where I was living at. Yeah. Because it's already windy, so you don't know that it's increased. Very good. Well, we welcome your team and appreciate Chad introducing that. And we'll call for a motion.
Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R twenty, twenty-four, thirty-three, twenty-two, a resolution approving a marketing sponsorship agreement with Black Desert Resort.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you again. Next, consideration of resolution number R twenty, twenty-four, thirty-three, twenty-three, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with Santa Clara Ivans for the animal shelter.
Mr. Chairman, I see, um, this item on the agenda, and I've reviewed the agreement. I'm happy to talk, uh, you through it. Um, basically what this does is establish a, an MOU with Santa Clara Ivans so that when our sheriff's deputies pick up animals out in the county, uh, they have a place for those animals. County doesn't have an animal shelter, so we contract with different jurisdictions for use of their shelters. So this one was with Santa Clara Ivans.
Same basic thing we did with Washington last year.
Yeah, exactly.
And we have one with La Verca as well. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution R dash twenty, twenty-four, dash, thirty-three, twenty-three, resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with Santa Clara Ivans for animal shelter services. And I'd also like to thank the community for their partnership with us.
And I will second that motion and the gratitude.
Wonderful. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Item eleven, consideration of resolution number R twenty, twenty-four, thirty-three, twenty-four, resolution approving an amended agreement with West Publishing Company Corporation for Legal Research Services. Devin.
Yes, commissioners, the, uh, county attorney's office has a current, uh, contract in place for our West, uh, West Law Research Service. This would be an amendment to add an additional, uh, functionality, I guess, uh, for research services. This would bring us in line with, um, current, uh, levels of research that you'd expect to see in any office. And so this is the amendment that's before you. Um, what's nice on this proposal is that there's no rate increase until twenty twenty-five. And so it was good of us to give us, uh, six months, uh, at the same rate. And so, um, this is a total of three-year contract.
Excellent. And you explained to us earlier, of course, this helps you with all sorts of research, whereas you had pore over book after book after book to find similar cases, but with keywords and maybe even some dates and things. You were able to use this service to pull up cases that are similar enough that you can build a case upon either precedence or whatever, right?
Right, correct.
But you also explained that there were less reputable firms out there that use AI
Yeah.
to do the same thing, but then you go back and you say, whoa, that case didn't exist, or.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, AI is an emergent technology and there are some services that are great, like this one. Um, there are others that are not so great. And so West is kind of the, the standard and premier legal research provider. Most attorneys aren't using old-fashioned books anymore, casebooks, it's all online, so.
They look good, though.
Yeah, they're only for movies.
Yeah.
Backdrop. Well, very good. All right, a motion there, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution R dash twenty, twenty-four, dash, thirty-three, twenty-four, resolution approving an amended agreement with West Publishing Corporation for Legal Research Services.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Item number twelve, consideration of resolution number R twenty, twenty-four, thirty-three, twenty-five, resolution appropriating funding for engineering services on Phase One of the Zion Canyon Sewer Extension Project. Ethan.
Yeah, so as you know, uh, the county's been working with Zion National Park to extend the sewer line up the main canyon all the way to the end to improve the visitor experience. Um, so, uh, the, the state appropriated eighteen million dollars to the county, specifically to help out with that project. And so we have, um, come to an agreement with Ash Creek Special Service District. and also Sunrise Engineering to design that sewer line, and they have started their work already, and so they have, um, started to invoice the county for the work they've completed. Um, the eighteen million from the state, we're still working on the contract for that funding, so we don't have access to it just yet. Um, so this resolution would just approve two hundred and two thousand, one hundred dollars to be expended by the county for the work that's been completed by Sunrise and Ash Creek now. And then once we have access to that state funding, we can get reimb, the county can get reimbursed from that state funding.
Okay, and is that the total thus far, or is that a down payment?
Yeah, that's just, that's the total thus far that's been invoiced to us for the work that's been completed.
All right, and more, more to come?
Yeah.
And we've confirmed that the reimbursement is not an issue?
No, no, but should be, shouldn't be any issues there. We're just, Go EO has had some staff turnover and reorganization in their office, and so things have been moved a little bit slower, but we've had contact with them and everything.
And Mr. Chairman, can I add to that as well? I've been in touch with the Ash Creek folks, and they've also asked for an appropriation of, because they're, they've had contact with Zion National Park, it just made sense. They're the approved contacts with them, and they're helping to run and administer this contract. They've asked for an appropriation of five thousand dollars that would be invoiced to the county as they, you know, devote engineer and staff time to this project, that they could get reimbursed as well.
Bringing a total to two oh seven, one hundred?
Correct. So the two oh two, one hundred is, these are payments directly to Sunrise Engineering, and the five thousand would, would be payments to, to Ash Creek to cover their staff and engineering time.
Okay, that should be part of the motion.
And Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution R twenty twenty-four thirty-three twenty-five, approving funding for engineering services on Phase One of Zion Canyon Sewer Extension Project with two hundred and two thousand, one hundred dollars going to Sunrise Engineering and five thousand dollars going to Ash Creek Special Service District.
And I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Steve. That concludes our agenda. We are obligated to tell you that in the back is being recorded and therefore rebroadcast daily on TDS cable channels twenty-two and one oh eight at ten AM, two PM, and five thirty PM. They're also available on demand at youtube.com backslash Community Education Channel. Appreciate those who are, have been in attendance, and we are adjourned.